Today.
Mr. Chairman. Could we remove item twenty-four? Until we get the board ruling back?
Let's see the board.
I would object.
I would object.
I agree.
I object.
Is there a reason to have this on prior to that ruling?
Yes.
We're ruling or acting in the dark is what we're doing?
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, need a motion on the agenda?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. Approval of minutes, January twentieth?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for clarification, can you announce the vote?
All right. The vote on that agenda question was three, to leave it as it is, two, to not leave it as it is. All right. Discussion and approval of the minutes.
I'd motion the approval of the minutes. Uh, Mr. Auditor with the small correction, the last item should be a four-zero, not five-zero.
Okay, with that correction, we have a motion, need a second? Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? I'm six. Presentation of resolution thanking and commending Kathy Sands.
Mr. Chairman.
Izo. Discussion and approval of claims. Need a motion on the claims? I'll move it, need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Now, presentation of resolution. Thanking Kathy Sands, County Assessor for years of service. Jeremy, would you like to read this?
It'd be my pleasure, Mr. Chair. It's a resolution thanking and commending Kathy Sands for her service to Woodbury County, whereas Kathy Sands has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the Woodbury County Assessor's Office for twenty years. From July third nineteen ninety-five to January thirty-first two thousand fifteen. And whereas the service given by Kathy Sands as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by her dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County. And now therefore being resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of this board thanks and commends Kathy Sands for her years of service to Woodbury County. And if further resolved, that it is a wish of all those signing below, and it is unanimous, that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Kathy Sands. Be it so resolved this thirteenth day of January two thousand fifteen.
Letter through. All right, get cameras ready. Thank you. Congratulations. No, you have to walk the guy. Item number seven, County Auditor, Patrick Gill.
Uh, item number seven is the Farmer's Drain District Campus. Roger Rand received two thousand nine votes. So we declare Roger Rand duly elected as the officer of Farmer's Farmer's Drain District Trustee for Subdistrict Number Two.
How do we deal with that?
Motion to receive.
I'll move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? B.
Senator B is the Garretson Drain District Trustee for Subdistrict Number Two. Roger Rand received five hundred and sixty-four votes. We declare Roger Rand duly elected as Garretson Drain District Trustee for Subdistrict Two.
Need a motion to receive?
Move it. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? C.
We'll receive County Auditor's report.
Okay, got a motion to receive, the auditor's report, fees collected, need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? D. Discussion and action to approve county claims procedure.
Okay, it's requested to bring this to the board, the county claims procedure by Supervisor Zhang and Mossam. And before we get started, the caveat is that it's important for you folks to realize is that you are the chief financial officers of the county. You cannot delegate responsibility to make sure that the sufficient backup documentation and policy to support approving a claim. Since nineteen ninety-seven, we've been doing that for the year at the request of the supervisors. So step one of the procedure will be the county departments will submit claims for the payment through the documented AP process. I included that in the homework too, but that is something that the department have been doing since I've been. I guess we did implement what the act of entered into the system themselves. They used to put together the claims, paper claims, they didn't put office and we would have. But when we implemented HTE, we actually sent that out to the departments where they could do it themselves. But they still bring the physical claims to the office. The auditor's office will review them, determine whether the claims are submitted and comply with the county policy, state and federal law. That's what we've always done for you folks. If a claim is submitted to the auditor's office and raised it's not compliant, the submitting department will be contacted by the auditor's office in an attempt to correct the deficiency. Once the claims are filed for presentation, the edits will be forwarded to the Board Administrator Coordinator, and we will forward them to the board for review. Karen, now do you do you have to send an email out to the folks, the board with those AP edits or how?
Yeah, we need to call and their email and try and get the information from them.
Okay. You don't have to stick, change anything unless you unless you prefer, we could, uh, we could just send them out directly if they had your email group if you want to do it that way. Otherwise, this is the way we've been doing it and continue to do it. Claims will be available to board members to check out, to provide an opportunity to review them if they so choose. We've set up a place in the back of the auditor's office, I just showed, Mr. Clausen, Mr. Zhang asked about it, is that we have a cubicle back there that's in, that you can privately come back and review the claims if you'd like to do that. If you believe that there is some issue with a particular claim that you've received the edits, you want to come in and see them, you can do that at any time.
Mr. Gill, would you comment on how that might help the HIPAA HIPAA issue?
That's a, that was a concern that was raised is that we used to bring the claims in and set them here, but the concern was raised is that some of those claims, and they do include, uh, medical information that could be a violation of HIPAA. Yeah, if you want to.
Sure. We looked at a couple of different cases. My name's Eddie Gelland, I'm HR Director.
He's also the county's compliance officers at HIPAA.
HIPAA privacy officers as well. Uh, when we looked at this, it had to be clear that there could be no one that would have access other than five of you to those claims and had it in an area designated as that. The only way we could use the office back here would be is that there was somebody who was watching it on a full-time basis to ensure that no one else went near it, that there was a lock on the door so that no one could enter with a key or with a fob, authorized or unauthorized, they could not enter from the outside at that time. So this seemed to be the best situation. It puts you in a city, just the way the HIPAA law and privacy laws work, no one can actually have access, even if they just have the ability to. That puts you in jeopardy with something. So that's why it's good to have a more private.
And I haven't looked at the cubicle area, but that it's secure enough? I mean, it's kind of in an open office without, it's not locked or?
No.
But I haven't seen it yet, so it's.
What you have to understand is that we, when we process the claims when they're working on them, Jean puts them in a drawer for this lock. And then if you folks want to look at them, she can hand them to you, you take it right back to that cubicle and look at them. They would be in your control. You assume responsibility for them as soon as you take them from Jean, to make sure that there's no violation that takes place and just hand it back to her, she puts it back in there. And then.
So you feel it's secure enough?
Yeah, I think so. The key is that they're never left alone, the claims are never left alone, and that when they're not with you, that they are locked and keyed. Because there is definitely information that would, if it were leaked, would cause a breach and require some notifications and stuff. It is important for us to deal with it properly.
Could you comment on the edits, the AP edits, send it to them? We're waiting for attorney. We used to put those out on the website, there's a question about that, and we intend to do that again once we get.
Yes, what we've done is because we went to a local attorney, our attorney's current firm, and they recommended that we seek some even more expertise with their recommendation. So we went to them, they, they looked at the procedures, we will have procedural changes, we've already started, but same with this. It's a, with this, is most of the information we saw, and I believe, we'll have the letters, we were just discussing letters before it came down here, I was on the phone with them. Most of the information, as long as it does not have personally identified withheld information can be put out there, or personally identified with information. We're going to clean, we're going to scrub the information to make sure, and we've already had improvement from some of the departments on that, to make sure that we'll be able to again post those claims out on the website. It's just a matter of making sure that when the stuff that's out there, it can show out and out, it's going to show a variety of information, as long as it doesn't cross that bridge to get to the point where it does have individually identified department information.
And there is going to be training to the departments?
There will be training to all of the departments. We likely file to be what they call a hybrid, so that we are in a position where we can have some of the departments designated, so that they don't have to worry about the HIPAA handling and secondary, roads would be an example, conservation, others like that. And then we can, then the other departments will all go through necessary training, will cover hidden procedures, typical policies, and we'll do this on a hand and a base, it's going to hold. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Any disputed claim can be presented by the Department of the Board of Supervisors for a payment, I think it is one of these ones. You approved one this morning that we didn't feel met the policy, that it was just a very small claim, and the reason that we flagged it was that it didn't have documentation. And so what will happen in the future, which occurs, is that we will not include that, and if the, you know, if the department wants to bring it to the board, they can during the claims, the time that you address claims, they can present their case at that time if they want to, want you folks to approve it.
That would be a change from the current way where we are basically asked to make exceptions almost constantly for claims that go against our policy. Going forward, we wouldn't have to do that in order to, we wouldn't have to have a brouhaha every week for a minor claim that may not follow policy.
They would, the department, they disagree with what we've said, they can come to you directly at the time during the board meeting, you approve claims and present that claim.
Would that disputed claim be in the AP edit?
Uh, no.
Okay. My only concern would be is there needs to be a way that it's properly on the agenda.
That, that particular claim?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise we'd never know it was there.
You would when they came to the board, he's saying that you need prior notification for that.
The situation we're talking about is that one of the department heads bought twelve dollars worth of pop out of the vending machine, which doesn't give you a receipt. And it was for a retirement party from a commission. I wish I could have caught him a couple of days ago, I'd have given him the money. But thinking ahead, maybe you go buy a twelve pack.
Right. And that's, yeah, that's what you could do.
But tell me again though, that you're not going to flag it with the pink slips anymore?
No, because what we said, we will return it. If a claim that we believe does not meet the documentation or the policy or the law, we'll tell them that they need to get that information, or they have the option of coming directly to the board to present that claim.
So Mr. Gill, then that would mean procedurally that they would ask to be put on the, the agenda possibly for the next week?
Right.
If they wanted to permanently petition the board to approve that claim?
You would tell them?
Or in this situation, maybe just eat the cost themselves or give the share.
We would tell them that we don't believe that meets policy, they can contact the board office and have it put on the agenda during that period of time.
So it satisfies that?
Yeah, that would work.
Very good.
Why did you make that change?
It was requested by Mr. Mossam.
Do not flag them via a slip?
Honestly, this goes back to, Maury Welkley made the same request in nineteen ninety-six when I was here, is that the claims not even come to the table?
I meant just the flagging them with the that part, I mean.
It was the same at that time, it's that he said that, uh, you know, you don't need to see it, and if you don't get the information, then it shouldn't be coming before us.
I think it's helpful because then the claims that don't follow policy are separated from the hundreds of thousands of dollars of claims we approve every week.
But they're separated now by a pink slip. They aren't.
They're not separated as far as how we motioned to approve the claims. If there is a disagreement over that claim, then we hold up the payment of the entire package.
Actually, yeah.
Not necessarily, we can just hold up on that one, but I, I won't belabor it, I, I guess I, I think it may add more of a brouhaha personally, but that's.
I actually believe what they suggested there is that not seeing more transparency, because the most claims will come to you before you got it, uh, tagged now, the public doesn't know that there's an dispute, this way they will, there will be a notification.
I don't know of any business that allows payment of anything without a receipt. That's just not done. Okay, we need a motion on this?
Uh, just the last step here is.
Oh, excuse me.
If the public asks to review any physical claim, they'd be allowed to do so under the supervision, under supervision of the auditor's office, or, yeah, if it's an issue that has to do with a claim that might have some HIPAA information on it. But we'd rather have a request by the public to look at any of those claims, but this allows them to do that, is that they can do that, but we have to supervise those actions. If somebody wants to look at it, we have to make sure before we give it to them that there's not any information that could be allowed, if you make that decision. Okay? Any questions?
Well, I am requested by, I appreciate it, and I move the amended approved approval of the county claims procedures presented by Auditor Gill.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Okay. Last item, discussion and approval of Starcom FY sixteen proposed operating budget. Uh, Mr. Brown's in the audience. This is the budget submitted by that commission, right? Mr. Gill?
Yes, I mean, I'd ask Dennis if this was put in the budget. This is the budget the commission approves, who are asking today is the authorization of the Chair of His Highness as the chairperson. It includes sixty-six thousand, includes sixty-six thousand, seven twenty-seven, which is our share of the Starcom, and then there's eighty thousand, five hundred dollars for capital improvement. He can tell you what the capital improvement is, we'll budget that out, our CIP on it.
Capital improvement, the radio system was originally installed in two thousand and five. We did an upgrade on it in two thousand and nine, it's scheduled for another upgrade now. It's basically a supercomputer, we've been, before previous boards about this topic. Starcom is shared between seven different governmental agencies, also, all six of the other governmental agencies have put forward the funds for us to start the upgrade process. It'll take about three years, you'll see these budget dollars over a three-year period of time to complete the upgrades. It's a, it's a very dynamic system, and if we don't continually upgrade it, we'll end up in a position where we have to buy new radio systems, so.
So the bottom line here is a whole lot of people agreed on this proposed budget, should get it where it is.
To, to name them, the City of Narsu, Union County County Commissioners, Dakota County LEC Board of Trustees, that's the City of South Sioux, and Dakota County, as well as the City of Sargent Bluff, and the City of Sioux City. Woodbury County is the owner of the Starcom system, we administer it.
We cover twenty-three percent of the cost. On the area of form that you have on your iPad there, it'll show the revenue from each county and city on top for Starcom. On the bottom, the pink is for the split up on the capital improvement.
Will we approve the budget for Starcom? Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Thank you, sir, now part of your budget's done. All right, Human Resources, Pro Memorandum Personnel Transactions, I will pass that around. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Authorized Chairman to sign the authorization to initiate hiring practice, need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second? Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? All right. Next up. Mr. Lutzen Company.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. You want me just to jump in?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, yeah, we were asked to bring a copy of, a fresh copy of the cost sharing agreement for the interchange justification report known as the IJR. Nothing much has changed here since this was floating around several months ago. You know, I would call your attention to it as soon as you get a copy of it here. Maybe the easiest way is just to flip to the back, the last page, we had the Exhibit Eight. We put a six-hundred thousand dollar budget on this for now, and the formula used to share the cost between all the entities has not changed in terms of the percentages, the numbers went up. One thing we were asked to do was to cap, if you see the three asterisks we put there by the Sioux Ann Initiative's cost of forty thousand two hundred, they've asked to cap their maximum exposure at that level. So that's the, that's really the only change from the previous agreement that had been put together again several months ago. So if you want to read through this, anyway, this is up for discussion. Uh, I've been told all the parties are interested in getting this to be signed and moving the project forward, and so if you so choose to move this forward, it would require your approval, then somebody's going to need to take it around to the other entities and get them to sign. Mark, do you have a question?
No, I'm going to take it around.
Oh, okay.
We get it through here.
I did have a question, I was just curious as to what happened to the MOU, if I remember last time, this stalled because the city of Sioux City wanted a MOU, has that, that's not required anymore to get the signatures or what?
I think that's the next step. We met last week, and as Terry knows, it was a rather animated discussion, to say the least, but we did to agree, to agree on moving forward. Each step will be hammered out as we go. There are no commitments other than this study. And what's this study do?
Yeah, this is the first step in determining whether or not an interchange is justified at the mile markers between one thirty-eight and one forty. That's the area that's been talked about, which feeds, it's just south of Sioux City, feeds into the South Bridge Park, and it's consistent with the master plan that we put together. And as you know, it's been discussed ever since I've been up here.
I was going to say, how long have we been trying to get this signed?
So.
So if it was signed today, how long would it take to have a real interchange?
Um, well, the study itself would probably take a year to eighteen months, there's quite an environmental process associated with the whole process. So the interchange, the, the report is just as it says, it's an interchange justification report. There's nothing to say the interchange will be justified, and you have to first prove to the feds that you can justify putting an interchange there based on traffic volumes and so forth. Uh, and then you go through the environmental process as well. So once it's justified, then it goes to, it'll be submitted to the DOT. The, the unique thing about this is the DOT is asked to be at the table through the planning process, which should help move the process along.
And providing a third.
Yeah, and also putting a third of the cost in, which they historically have not done. So this is a really good deal for the, for everybody in the area to get the, the DOT to pay for a third of the cost. Once the, assume the process has gone through, assuming that the interchange is justified, and the feds agree with that, then you submit for funding. And that funding process could take up to three to five years, sometimes seven to ten years. The hope here is be, due to previous discussions with the DOT and their understanding of what's happening here with the master plan and so forth, they continue to support this project, and we're hoping, by the fact that they're putting money in the study, and that they'll be at the table during the planning process. By the time we get to actually requesting funding for the interchange, that could be a twenty to twenty-five million dollar request from the DOT. By then, we're hoping it's, it's programmed in their planning, and hopefully then that will shorten the cycle it would take to actually get the project funded. But from today, you're looking at twelve to eighteen months, well, it could be two years to complete the IJR by the time consultants hired and get contracted and get the process started. Eighteen to two months, eighteen months to two years for the IJR probably, and then one to three years, five years, six years after that to get funded. That's kind of up in the air, and then it'd take a couple of years to actually build it. So on a good day, you're probably eight to ten years from today to actually have an interchange. The good news is once you start the process, and if it gets justified and approved, I think you could then start marketing the site as soon to have a new interchange. At that point, it's just a matter of funding priorities, and you'll have to do your share of lobby with the DOT Commission to rise to the higher level of getting, getting it funded.
Just out of curiosity, we're, Mark, you can answer this, the people that are signing, the marriage, were they all at your meeting last week, is that, do you have all the stakeholders and the board?
Yes.
Back, back to your question, Jackie, on the MOU, that did not come up at the discussion. Back, back to your question, Jackie, on the MOU, that did not come up at the discussion. It was just solely agreeing to this.
Because that stalled it last time, so I was just wondering. I'll move it, I'm going to move it.
It seems like everybody is on board.
Need a second.
Sergeant.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Is that a good estimate? I think so. What we haven't done is see how much work has been done already. Typically, these things have run between four and eight hundred thousand dollars, so we kind of picked a number in the middle. Some work to this has been done in the past, and if, if we can sit down, depending on who does the work, we'd love to do the work for you, by the way, but if we do the work, we would want to sit down with the City of Sioux City, because we think there's data. Yeah, they've got quite a good. Yeah, that could keep the cost down, and we wouldn't want to reinvent that wheel. We haven't gotten to that point yet, but if, if we were selected to do the work, we'd sit down, see what was done, then develop a scope, work with the DOT on the scope and the fee, and then, then present a contract.
Mr. Brown.
Two things. First, I'd just like to say it's very generous of the Siouxland Initiative to maintain their offer of forty thousand, since this has been on the table for a couple of years. And secondly, just for the public's information, and Dennis, you can speak to this if you like, but to my understanding, the estimated one hundred and eighty thousand of Woodbury County's share will be, will be paid by excess local option sales tax for economic development dollars.
Yes, originally, we did have this in our vision twenty fifty plan, but we're taking that out of there, funded with local option, and we do have the funds on hand.
We do have the funds on hand.
Actually, we'll oblige probably, give a hundred and eighty or two hundred thousand, we have plenty of money on both sides, to be safe on the safe side, face there is a little bit of overrun.
Thank you.
And it has been tentatively obligated for probably two or three years now, so.
Yeah. This is officially going to say, yes, we will pay all local option sales tax.
One of the good things about that, as you probably know, is you do not have to go through amending the urban renewal area to include the IJR area, so it can move the process along quicker. We don't have to deal with that whole issue at this point.
Now, my investigation into the need for this interchange is at six o'clock in the morning, when the lights run from Singing Hills Boulevard all the way down to CF, and it looks like a lava flow. It is incredible, the number of vehicles going out to Sabre, CF, Trinity, AGP, Knox, Toledo. That alone's pretty good, you know, information for the need. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Okay, along with that, Mr. Chairman, we have a copy of a letter that I drafted now, I think, four times, which is to Tony Lazarus, the DOT District Engineer, and this basically just says that the, all the parties have agreed to this agreement, which you just approved, and request the DOT to fund their third, and they have been waiting for this letter. They want to make sure that all the locals continue to support this. So, this, this requires no action, but it's a letter that could be attached to the agreement to demonstrate to the DOT that you have, in fact, all agreed to move forward with the IJR. And in this letter, I might point out, probably a year ago or so, a year and a half ago, you had received a letter from the DOT asking who was going to lead this and so forth, because they want one point of contact. And so, we, we responded to them over a year and a half ago that the county would take the lead, so I reiterated that. I wanted to make sure you're aware that you will be the lead agency here in communicating with the DOT if you take this project. So, other than that, there's not a lot of new stuff here, it doesn't really require any action.
Mr. Gill.
I believe it would require action.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Need a motion to approve signature of the letter to District Three Engineer.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Well, I'd love, could I have just a minute on the master plan?
You've never lost an opportunity.
Okay. Okay. As you know, we presented the master plan a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully you'd have a chance to read it or look at it. We've received really no comments back. We've put a little more effort in cleaning up a few of the unfinished sections in here. So, we're at a point, unless anybody has comments, to take our new revisions, finish this up, and get you the copies. We'll probably get ten copies up here for you, and that would pretty much complete our effort that you contracted with us several months ago to do. So, we appreciate doing this, we've really had a lot of fun doing it, it's been a very, very enlightening process, and there's a ton of opportunities in here, as you, as you all know. So, without any other comments, we're going to go ahead and wrap that up. You should have final copies for us by next week. And the only other thing I might mention of that is, that'll wrap up our work, but we did talk in previous meetings several times about how do you take this and roll it out to your county citizens, and we would be more than happy to help conduct a workshop or workshops, go to city council meeting, however you would want to create a forum for that, if you thought that was worthwhile. It's a great document, you have great opportunities, and so, however you want to roll that out to the public, we'd love to be a part of that if you want us to help.
It'd be a new scope of, of work that you'd be looking at off?
Yeah, if you engaged us to do it, it'd be a, a meeting or two, however you'd want to do it.
Obviously, it was an offer.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm, we're just very interested in, you know, really helping you promote this thing, because it's a great opportunity and, and so that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all that you do. I mean, I, I spent many hours with you and, and the other folks trying to get to this point. This is a long time coming. I think this is a great step forward. I'm glad we're able to move forward. Too bad we're not halfway there. We could have been halfway there had we just done it to begin with, but we're here now, and, and no looking back, only looking forward.
Good, good. Like I say, we're also awful, we're, we're very happy to have an office here, because being the space cadet I am, I left all the stuff I handed out to you back in Des Moines, and in the last five minutes, we ran over and made copies, and you didn't even know. So, it's nice having an office where I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Sheriff Drew and County Attorney Jennings, I've asked them to do a presentation on innovative projects they're working on. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first and seize up also, but as far as the presentation, though, this is just discussion. What I would like to do, and what I'm going to suggest, is that once we get all the numbers together, which we don't have yet, is to come back and be able to give you some more specifics. The one thing that we do need to do, and this is about fine collections, so we know, we're looking at the space downstairs. Last time I came, I thought we were going to be moving into the mailroom area, but Mike Headed had showed me a different area across the hallway, and it's been used right now just for storage, but it's more conducive to employee, employee save. So, I think we're going to change positions. The, the people who are storage, or maintaining storage there now, I've talked to those folks, they've agreed to basically switch places. So, we're still going to need to use that old mailroom for their storage, and hopefully the board will be in agreement with that. But again, that area is more conducive to having actual employees in it. And there's also a bathroom in there that's not being used now, so it will just work a lot better. Just some preliminary numbers for you. We're going to need to get at least two new desks, I believe. There's one that we're going to be able to use from Chosco Void, so we're looking at two new desks for around twenty-three, twenty-five hundred dollars, in that range, desk and file cabinet, not just for desks. To have three new computers, because we're looking at stacking that with two current employees, plus we'll be coming back. When I give you those numbers, we're looking at hiring at least one new staff member, which is a lot better than in the past, where we're looking at hiring a whole new staffing of that office. So, I'll give you those numbers. Just roughly speaking, looking at the last employee that we hired for support staff, salary and benefits total, we're looking at around sixty-one thousand for the year for that person. The good news is, though, that if we do this correctly, and if we collect these amounts, that position should be paid for at some point in time. So, that's the hope. But the board, again, is going to have to front those lines, because there's not going to be any initial returns until we get this up and running. But again, since we're using the staff as employees to get this up and going, we're hoping that by the time we get to that point, we have a more clear idea of where we're headed, what we can possibly collect. I know Supervisor Taylor, you ran talking about finding collections and whatnot, and you threw out a, a big figure out there, but some of you may not know, and you might not know either, that not all of those dollars can the county collect out. We can collect a lot of that money, but the county doesn't get a whole lot of that share. So, we're hoping to bring back some more realistic numbers that the county can collect. But again, if we do it right, it's going to be substantial over. So, we just got to track down these people and do it correctly. The other thing out there, as far as costs, that I'm going to be coming back asking the board as far as upfront costs, and in addition to the desks, are, we're going to need telephones and computers. The computers we're looking at, again, in the two thousand to twenty-three hundred dollar range, telephones shouldn't cost that much. I didn't get a figure on those yet. We had hoped to get some that are already in certain locations, just move them around, so I'm waiting for feedback. They may not be the newer phones. If they're not, then we're going to be looking to purchasing the newer phones, but if there are the newer ones, we're just going to use those. So, again, that's going to kind of save the county some money, which is what we're trying to do as best we can, save the county as much money as possible upfront, and then also gain some savings on the back by collecting these funds. There are, just for a better understanding, and again, I will highlight some of these things, there's the collection of fines, which is normal criminal fines and court costs and that kind of deal, and then there's the CAP program, which is driver's license rent statement program. And I, I'll give you a better idea of what we're looking at as far as dollars for both of those funds, because we can't intermingle those, they have to be kept separate, but we can collect on both of them. And the county's going to get a share on both of those funds. Some of the things that the county can't get a share of are things like restitution, law enforcement initiative surcharge, room and board that are owed to the sheriffs, those kind of things. We can't get a percentage of that as part of the county, but all the other fines that are owed to the state, we can. So, we hope to give you a little bit better breakdown of that. Supervisor Chairman Mossin wanted us to put this on for discussion, but what I really need feedback from you guys is that room that we're looking to use downstairs in the basement. I've talked to Mike Headed again, talked to John Malloy's office, that's timeframe of when we can get that equipment in and get going, and we're looking at around mid to late February, because we want to get started with this as soon as possible. My question to you guys, do we need action to actually do some of those initial setups? Do we need action to get that room, first of all? Because I'm assuming it belongs to the county, so it's under you guys' control. Mike Headed is looking at putting a cutout window in the door so that we can speak through the window. We won't change the door, but it'll be a cutout, and he can talk to that once we come back. But that price is minimal. I, I think the price of that is two to three hundred bucks, somewhere in there at that. So, that's not a lot of money. But again, the door belongs to the county, so we need approval from the county to do that. So, those are the kinds of things that I'm looking at getting from you guys. I just need to know when we can get back on the agenda to make this an action item, because right now, again, it's just a discussion.
Josh?
You mentioned two employees being shifted over, plus one new one.
Right.
What are, are those employees currently involved in some duties that kind of mirror what this is?
Yes. What I've done is, is once we started looking in this in earnest to get this done, started looking at the workflow, the workflows that we do, and started saying, okay, I could possibly ship this employee, or we can do these things differently. So, those are the things that I've done. I've talked to those employees that I expect to move. I don't want to mention any names, because I'm hoping to meet with that department of those folks combined later on this week to discuss that with the employees that are going to be affected, and how they're going to be affected, and how we're going to work through this thing. So, yes, the two current employees that currently work in my department that have agreed to transfer into these positions and get this thing up and going.
You had mentioned, and appreciate you bringing, presenting roughly seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. Do you have any sort of ballpark on what might be brought in? And I know I won't, we won't hold you to any certain number, but just in general, looking at one of the county or other counties around us, or what potentially is out there that as we go through the budgeting process, we might be able to, to look at as a potential source of revenue?
And I hate that source of revenue thing. But just say, for instance, let's use Blackhawk County. They do this, they do it well, they've done it for a number of years. I think they as a county are somewhere in between two fifty to three fifty thousand fiscal year, I think that's their numbers for twenty thirteen, somewhere in that range. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know it's in the two fifty to three fifty.
And that's what, like thirty percent?
It depends. There's forty percent, I believe, on the just collection of fines, and then once we reach a certain threshold, which Woodbury County, based on population, is four hundred thousand, then the county attorney's office also then gets a cut on that. So, those numbers include county as well as county attorney's office numbers, bulk of it being going back to the general fund and the county. On the CAP plan, I believe it's like a thirty-five percent that you get from the CAP plan. Hold me on that, but I think that's the numbers. Again, they're separate numbers, so, and I don't really have a clue for that.
That program is basically, if you get picked up for OWI, you can make an arrangement with the county attorney to have a license to go to work at a fee. Is that close?
Very close. Yes, it deals with traffic fines, more or less. We can also collect, it causes issues with this, you know, for, for instance, drug convictions. You get licensed pending for drug convictions and stay alive. It causes problems, but I think we can collect on that, but again, that's going to be an issue that the staff person that's going to be coming in here needs to look at, those types of issues of what we can do and what we can't do, because again, there's rules and regulations involved in this thing. And there's a lot of things that we can do versus what we can't do. There's timing issues of when we can collect, when the fines become delinquent, and those kinds of things. But the person that's, that's going to sit in this chair moving forward is very capable. I think you guys will be pleased who that person is, and again, we're, we're hoping to get this thing up and running and to get it done right, so.
Speaking to your request, I'd like to just see it come on the agenda next week for action on a space, you know, in Lua, we don't have a real space study yet, but I certainly know that finding a space has slowed down getting started. So, I, I guess if you're looking for consensus, I'd like to see you put it on the agenda for next week.
Can you have numbers for us along with that?
I, I doubt that we'll have the numbers, but I would like to at least get the space. I'll have the numbers as far as those initial startup costs. I can have that.
Yes.
That shouldn't be a problem. But that's something that we need to get done, because again, I'm looking to get, make this happen mid to late February, John Malloy's group, as well as Mike Headed of Building Services.
I think, I think the numbers are important, but more important to me, I guess, is when this would start becoming, for lack of a better term, a source of revenue, because that's the point of us instituting it.
Right.
Would you be able to see other counties that have done this, like a rough estimate of what point they began to turn the corner?
Yes, and, and we'll hopefully give that to you at some point. Actually, the folks who are having to do this are going to sit and visit with another county first week of February, so that, that should give us a better idea of what we can expect, just from past discussions, talking to folks. Some of them are, returns are a lot sooner, some of them take a little while longer, because we've been looking at this issue for quite a long time now, so this isn't anything new to us. We're hoping that we get those returns a lot sooner than later.
We're just going to need some history on it. We just got to get you up and running and get it started, and then look at it down the road.
That's the biggest thing right now, but.
Right? I mean, that's what I hear you telling us.
What, what I would like to do is just to keep you updated as much as possible, once we get this going and get a better idea of, of who those people are, because a lot's going to depend on, you know, can we find them? Are they working? What assets do they have? Are they willing to pay those voluntarily versus do we have to go out there and force them to pay those kinds of things? With the new legislation, it helps, because a lot of the times, they have to come back to us now. They have to come to us to get their license plates renewed, they have to come to us if they want to get driver's license, but now they go to another county. But we're helped along in the process with the new regulations, but we still have to go out and get the bulk of it this week.
Okay, you're going to put something together for next week?
I would like to, yes.
You're on. Mr. Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
Briefly talk about something that we've probably talked about a few times, and that's twenty-four seven. I've talked to legislators, and they're moving forward, and it looks like a strong possibility that that will come about this legislative session. Last year, it was kind of late in the year, so it didn't, I don't understand, it was an off-year of stuff, but, so it didn't get moving. But it looks like it's gonna move forward, and we have the possibility of being a pilot program, so that would be good for us.
And twenty-four seven is what?
Twenty-four seven is someone that has been picked up, and it could be with drunk driving. It could be a number of things that are alcohol related. And they have to come into the facility of the sheriff's office, wherever we designate. We're thinking about a couple different locations, but they would come in every twelve hours and give a breath sample. And then, one of the things about the program, if you remember, I know three of you were here when Mr. Mickelson came and presented that program, and some went up to Sioux Falls, but one of the good things about it is you can change behavior. And ninety days is kinda the number that they put these people on, and if you can change that behavior, then you may get that way from doing some of the things they're doing. The sheriff up there has people that are on that program that might have a weekend visits, visitations. That may be substance abusers, and they have to come in and they're, they're either on a bracelet, because if they're using drugs, that will also detect that. And also, we brought this. Now, the good news about it, I think also, is that they can remain employed if they're out of town. And they come back once a week and they download that bracelet, and they'll be able to tell if they've used any alcohol or drugs. So, there's a lot of positives. There's no cost. The county decides what kind of fee you would charge. I believe anyhow, county in Sioux Falls is two dollars for each time you come get a breath sample, four dollars a day. I kinda, I don't know what packs cigarettes cost, but I figured somewhere in that price range would be a good fee to charge. And the county then would get a percentage. That money, one dollar a time, I think goes back to the company, so we would get all the rest of that money. So, that is a, that's looking favorable. But we have looked into a couple of things that, when I've gone to the National Sheriff's Conference and the Iowa State Sheriff's School in December, was changing how we do our commissary kiosk. There's a company now, several, that have a kiosk machine in each of the pods, and they can order their commissary, they can get their meds, they can read our PRIA compliant thing. Everything on these machines will tell them what to do. There's some really nice safety features that we are not tied up, having to go deliver all these things, tape notes, and all these other things. Grievances can be filed and timestamped. It's just way ahead of the curve, and it is going to help the county in the long run. And I think that, I spoke with Josh, and we had to get an RFP. Is that the right word?
RFP.
RFP, I never did it right. RFP, and put it out for bid, and we've set up what we would like to have. And these machines in each of the pods are a tremendous way of doing business. It would, it would let the nurses know if a guy had a complaint, he'd just type this in, and it would go to the nurses station. They could deal with it instead of, you can only imagine how many letters with two hundred and some inmates we get hourly about different things. And for, I think, the credibility and the safety of everyone, a timestamp deal would really show that we're doing what we should, and it would really help us and benefit us in the long run. There's some money to be collected in that. Obviously, we would get a percentage of that back. Not a large percentage, but what it does is it frees up our staff from doing a lot of this thing, but we would generate revenue along guidelines. Along with this company and some of them, there's a program called Pay My Jailer. We collect fees now only because people voluntarily pay it. Under Pay My Jailer program, this company goes out and collects the fees. So, if they have a five hundred dollar bill they owe us, and, and four hundred and ninety is what they're able to collect, they get no money. They only are able to charge on top of that. So, it's a, it's a company that is able to generate some revenue. They're being used throughout Iowa and different sheriffs throughout the country. So, I think that's a, an area that we need to look into, and that would be a, something that, according to Josh, you guys would enter into that contract with them also, so.
What's the cost?
There is no cost for Pay My Jailer. So, those are, same with the kiosks with the company Trinity. There is no cost. We just gain whatever is being sold up at the jail. What was, what would we say in roughly nine thousand dollars maybe a year in commissary now, something like that? Something like that. And then, and they figured if we had this, we'd be, we'd probably, because it's a variety of more things that they could get, it'd be twenty-five, thirty thousand, we'd get a percentage of, of those dollars. But the main thing that I'm looking at is, you know, freeing up our staff, and number two, just a system that is automated. Before they can get into getting a commissary, they have to read the PRIA standard. We've talked about PRIA, Prison Rape Elimination Act. And they have to be able to read the manual, and they also have to read our guidelines in the jail before they can do any order or do anything. So, there's a timestamp on all those things that would help us get a litigation win. So, it's just, it's time to, you know, move forward and get some of these newer technologies that will help us.
So, you wanna make us money and not cost anything?
Yeah, that's a pretty good way to do it. I, listen, I'm, I'm not the author of it. It's just been around, and I think we need to take advantage of it.
That's good.
Both of these would need RFPs, separate RFPs, is that correct?
Oh, is the one company that does both those?
Uh, no. The one company, Trinity Group, is tied in with Pay My Jailer and also with Securus. And so, they, you know, I think they feel confident that they'll probably be the winner, but trust me, when you put it out, there'll be all these companies in trying to do that. That's where we, Josh and I in our office will try to set what we are looking for. And then they have to meet those, and then you guys will decide which is the best way to go.
So, do we have a consensus that he should go out for an RFP on these programs?
Yes.
Is it the programs or the equipment?
It's a...
Or both?
It's a both, yeah.
Do you have any idea what the equipment will cost?
The equipment doesn't cost us anything.
Oh, it does? Okay, okay.
That's strange concept.
Well, they're, trust me, they're making money. But, and we're getting a percentage of it. The main thing is, we are not, it's really helping us in a lot of areas.
Sort of like vending machines, where a high school doesn't own a vending machine, but they're getting a certain?
Yes, basically, but even going the next step, it has a number of things. They can look on there when their court dates are, all these things that we don't have to answer fifty-eight questions an hour. You know, hey, what time is it? Where's my attorney? It's all there. And so, boom, once they push it, it shows that they, they've had that, they can look at their court dates and everything, so it's, it's really a benefit.
So, if I check into the county hotel, I can get a pair of shorts out of that kiosk?
You can actually get, yeah, you can get your long johns that you might need, your T-shirts. All these things are revenues that would come back to us. Sheriff's throughout are saying, why are you doing that? It ties your staff up. There's no reason to be doing that. Because now all you're doing is, you're handling things that you're gonna end up, somebody's saying, I gave you seven, and you only gave me... It's just a better system. It's, it's more protected for us.
Do we have consensus to have him go ahead with an RFP?
Just to answer Mr. Taylor's question, the commissary part of it where we have physical machines in the jail, that does require RFP. The collection of the room and board, it's more of a service. A best practice might be to go out for an RFP. If there's only one company or two companies that are doing it, you could just solicit a quote. You wouldn't have to go through a formal RFP process for a lot of them.
Yes, between the two of you?
Yeah, it's really up to the pleasure of the sheriff.
We always ask for Josh to look it over, probably over a minute, but we appreciate his help.
Uh, one more item before you get away. We've had a discussion about moving your bracelet people.
Yes.
Trosser Hoyt, fourth floor, the room between the classroom and the ICN. The discussion gets to the need for some presence in Trosser Hoyt, which this would give sheriff presence pretty close to juvenile detention.
Right.
And second floor. We'll bring that back next week as a move item for space.
We're in favor of, I think it would help the attorneys, they've kinda said for years they'd be able to get more people on electronic monitoring if they didn't have to go out to Curio, and they would be downtown. So, I think it covers two things, maybe security and accessibility for, for those that are wanting to be on electronic monitoring.
Will you write that up for next week?
Sure.
Okay. You're still on?
Oh, yeah.
County Sheriff, received County Sheriff's Civil Division second quarter and year-to-date report. Need a motion?
Love it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. That means this is gonna get bigger, right?
The collection is, yeah, so.
Rural Economic Development, Mr. Weiser?
Morning supervisors, David Weiser, Director of World Economic Development for Woodbury County. I have with me today Mr. Eric Hennings. He's the President and CEO of CollegeProducts.com, or College Products, a company based out of Bronson. We're here this morning to basically have a discussion with you in regards to potential expansion of Mr. Hennings' company at his existing location. And really, the, the reason for us coming for you today to provide a discussion is due to the process that's required for him to acquire additional land, which would require a rezoning classification up to Woodbury County. And due to the previous experience that Mr. Hennings had with getting that location rezoned, it was at his request that we just come to you this morning, present the information, and somewhat gauge your level of support for this expansion.
Let me start by asking, what do you make and where does it go?
We work with colleges all across the United States. We currently manufacture nothing. Everything is manufactured for us. We're really a distributor in an online business. The product that ends up here in Bronson is really end of the run or what's left over from the purchase orders and just remaining inventory. We then ship it out. We have shipments that go from here to Maine, Pennsylvania, Atlanta, just kinda all over the place. Our cycle with what we do and what we have manufactured for us, it all comes in April, May, June, and it's ready for the college season in the fall, so all our deliveries are July and August. And what's left is kinda what ends up here and in other places across the United States.
And what is the product?
Lofts, refrigerators. Primarily, the refrigerators are really taking off. It's kinda becoming more our business. We used, we started the company as campus lofts back in ninety-six. Been in the business eighteen years. Over the course of eighteen years, business kinda changes a little bit, as all businesses do. The lofts kinda, they're still a core product, but there's more money in the refrigerator side of it, in the appliance side of it, working with the colleges and all the buildings that they're putting up. So, our business has kinda changed a little bit. We're focusing primarily on the appliance side of it.
So, if you have a kid going to college next year, the chances of running into some of your stuff is pretty good?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. When was it? It was in two thousand nine when we bought this property. We moved there from my grandma's house, and there was four employees. What do we have, maybe a thousand square feet? We bought this thinking, okay, roughly almost eight thousand square feet. We shouldn't have to move again. That'll, that'll handle us. If you look at the aerial photo from Google Maps, I think right now, we have, there's like twenty semi-trailers out there, three thousand plus square foot office, in which we're out of office space now, and we're dying for a warehouse. So, my, what I would like to do, it's outlined in black, it's about seven acres. Buy the additional seven acres, square up the property, and I'm looking at putting in one or two buildings almost identical to what we have there. It'd be a little wider, longer, about seventy foot wide by two hundred foot long. So, each building would be about fifteen thousand square feet. If we take the semi-trailers, I would like to get rid of about fifteen to twenty of those semi-trailers. We still keep those around, because I have a fleet of about sixty semi-trailers, and they're scattered all over the United States, different colleges. We move stuff. It's quick transport. A lot of trucks come in, but gone and go. So, we'll still keep some semi-trailers, but I'd like to get that back to where there's not as many. It's just kind of, we run out of room, we just keep buying trailers, and now I'm in a situation where I need to level off the hill that's left there with so much doors apart and build a building. But before I do that, I need to find out what the flavor of the county is to add existing land or additional land, get a zone commercial, and build a building. It looks like a lot of land on the south side. It's about four hundred feet is what that black rectangle is down there. If you put a two hundred foot long building in there, put a dock on the end of the fifty-three foot semi-trailer, and if you see on our existing building, we have about twenty feet of concrete between the building and the semi. Now, you're pushing, what, two hundred and eighty feet? That doesn't include the tractor in front of the trailer or a place to turn, and they still have setbacks to deal with. So, four hundred feet isn't that long. We go out there and start mapping it now, it seems like, wow, four hundred feet, that's a long ways, but it's really not.
Do you own this ground?
Uh, the tri, the odd shape, the north corner, yes. The black rectangle round that's outlined, no. I've worked with the landowner. We've come to an agreement where he'd be willing to sell as long as I could get the zoning I need. And it's contingent on that.
Mr. Hennings came to the sixth floor, had a discussion with myself and Mr. Pallolo, the Director of Planning and Zoning. And what we've kind of come to consensus on is that Mr. Hennings would have some initial negotiation discussions with the landlord, his neighbor, with the contingency on if the zoning is approved. And then, you know, what I'm gonna do is go through a process with the county assessor's office to get an estimated tax rate for his new development, so to help him make a more of an informed decision before he jumps into it headfirst, so. That's sort of where we're at. He'll be submitting paperwork to Planning and Zoning next Tuesday for review in their February meeting.
Mr. Pallolo, is there any reason why we couldn't do this?
I'm not sure how many of you were around back in two thousand nine, two thousand nine, on the history of this particular parcel. I would think the ordinance is flexible enough that we would not have to repeat what happened back in two thousand nine, in which you had your zoning commission present you with a recommendation, you not approve that rezoning. You, your board will erode their decision. We currently have this rezoned the way he wants to use it, just expanding the area. It's difficult to guarantee anything without holding a public hearing and hearing with public comment. Last go-round was very favorable for the rezoning getting done. I would think we stand a better chance of getting through this much smoother than we did back in two thousand nine. Outside of some very negative public testimony, we're most likely going to offer a staff recommendation to both the zoning commission and to you that this get approved.
And you would too?
Yes, you know, just within the last few months, Mr. Hennings been able to hire, was it, four new full-time employees as well as anticipated growth would be two more new hires. So, his current workforce is four, doubling the workforce, creating tax base, generating jobs. I feel like it's a good project for Woodbury County.
Now, does this require Eric to be in your next commercial?
He very well could. And then, so with that, and there's potential for opportunity with the investing Woodbury County Home Program that we may be able to provide further assistance on this project, so.
Just a personal comment from Planning and Zoning, if there was ever a poster child, poster boy for...
Poster man.
Poster man for rural economic development. Small business starting, basically in a home stand, and then expanding. This is it. We need to see more of this.
I totally agree.
The, the history on this was, planning zoning was against it. The board was not that happy with it. But what sold the project was the neighbors and the city Bronson. And it said they could live with it, they welcomed it, and that's how the board ended up voting for this project.
Really, the sole issue was related to the, the term spot in the zoning.
Right.
Which this was initially. Now that we've got that zoning designation there, this is not, the expansion of that use is not spot-reezoned technically.
Do we have consensus to support this project?
I have my support.
Go for it. I do, I, I think this is a marvelous program. I mean, it's great stuff for rural Woodbury County.
You've been to the city council, and in front of the city council?
You been to the city council, in front of the city council in Bronson?
Lately.
With the expansion and-
No, not with this. I stopped up to talk with these guys here real quick, just to find out if I was, if this was a viable option before I started moving forward. I'm kind of at a point where we're growing, we're growing a lot. A lot of what we do isn't even necessary here in the Midwest. I rented a forty thousand square foot warehouse in California for three months, and moved out there because we're doing so much in California. We're, we have state contracts that we're running, and this is just our own base, we're going to, you know, this is our hub, so we have a lot of internet, a phone, our sales reps are based out of here, we fly a lot, travel all over the country, so it's just a matter of, you know, what we're doing here, a lot of it will never ever come here, it's just, we need a place to have some stuff, so that's where we're starting.
Can I ask you a little question? What makes your apartments so special? I'm just curious, why this kid at Maine University doesn't go to the local Walmart?
Yeah, well, what it is, is that you have, most college kids, you can grab a refrigerator at Walmart. You know, back in the day, that was great, but now, what the schools are looking for is they're looking for the energy efficiency. The students want a freezer as well, where most refrigerators are just like a little flip-up freezer door, you can't really freeze anything. So we have a separate door freezer, separate door refrigerator, microwave's attached to the top, the refrigerator plugs into the microwave, the microwave plugs into the wall, only one appliance runs at a time. So it's really neat. There's two companies out there, us and one other company, and we have some patents on some things that we're doing that are really opening doors. So we landed the contract for the state of California last November, and that's going to be a big deal, and we're moving a lot up in the northeast, so.
Wow.
Roots are here, we want to keep them here, so.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Lon.
Thank you.
Mr. Pellelo, you're up. Public hearing, received zoning commission recommendation and first reading for.
Okay, back in December, your board referred some map amendment to our floodplain mapping to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation. This is the beginning of the process of the rescinding of an existing map panel and adopting a new one, as well as a floodplain study. So what I'm asking today is a public hearing and the first reading of an amendment to section five oh three B of our floodplain management ordinances. This project is necessitated in order to continue to participate in flood insurance programs with FEMA. It is caused by a study, which was initiated by the city of Sioux City regarding the Floyd River Valley, obviously a portion of it extends into rural Woodbury County. It impacted eight mapping panels throughout the county, all of those were in Sioux City, except a two-mile portion of one of those panels. The changes on the entire panel were within Sioux City, not in rural Woodbury County, but were required to adopt the panel. So we'll do that in the study, and I'm hoping we can have a single public hearing for all three of these, or at least sub-items. Rescind the existing map panel ending oh three seven D, adopt a new mapping panel oh three seven E, and then adopt the March second, two thousand fifteen, Woodbury County Flood Insurance Study.
Can we do all three at once?
Yeah, you can open the public hearing for anyone that wants to speak on any of the items.
Public hearing is open on these three items. Anyone to speak for or against? Hearing done, I would take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, hearing done, I motion to close the, to close the public hearing.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, we need to act on reading one.
Go ahead.
Please just tell me you know what you're doing.
Pardon me?
I need you to know what you're doing, and what the motion is for.
We are, we just closed the public hearing to rescind-
Re closed the public hearing.
Yes, to rescind a map panel.
But this, that's all you're asking, was the public hearing today?
And the first reading.
Yeah, they should approve the first reading, and then there'll be two more, basically the standard process for changing the ordinance.
So the action should be to approve the first reading?
Yes.
And these are all together?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the first reading?
One we're rescinding, the other two we're approving or adopting, and those can go together?
Yeah.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. See you next week?
We'll be back for the second reading and a separate public hearing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Building Services Mike Headed. We, well, Mr. Sheriff, you need to come up too. Or whoever handled that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah? Well, how did we get here to start with?
Delbert Longley is the state jail inspector, and he came a year ago, Todd Longley was at March, he comes yearly, and he dinged us on the bottoms of the shower doors and wanted them to be replaced. The problem was, they could use some of that for a weapon, or they could get cut, and there was a number of different things. And so, in order to be compliant, he gave us, I believe, ninety days or-
Middle of June.
Middle of June. And we hadn't got to it, and I brought it to the former chairman, and I think we all thought it was going to get done, and somewhere along the line, it just didn't get done. So here we are today.
Did the inspector return?
He is coming, once a year, he'll be back, so we want to make sure it's done.
What we did would be, we were authorized to repair some of the doors to give them by, because there was no money to do the job. Anyway, in the meantime, I went on to have surprises, that we had a company make the doors for us, stainless steel, so they never had to visit us again. I don't know if you guys all got something?
We have that, I think.
We have this?
Yeah.
All right, so what we did, we, what we like to do is buy, have the doors made, and then we'll hire a company come in and do it, and the cost is actually not too bad. The labor's nine thousand seven hundred fifty. The total for the having the doors made and ready to install is twenty-nine four hundred. Overall, grand total would be thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
We don't have all that.
And we should get this completed, this work, before doing the work.
We don't have all that.
I got one, I got one. To the package.
So the faster we get on-
I don't have one.
The faster we'll be done by then.
So our options are, put the new doors in.
That would be probably the only way that would make him-
And if we don't, what will he do?
Well, then- We work under a variance, so when he comes in and he does his inspection of the doors, you worry about losing the variance. I know that my view with Larry about reskin them-
Yeah.
Right? We haven't had an inspection since on it. I believe the inspection actually goes in the gate. And what happened-
Is there money budget anywhere for this, if you got it in your department?
No.
Sheriff?
No.
Dennis?
We have, we actually have some CIP funds that are left over from various projects, and when we estimate them, they're high, they came in bids lower, so we do have funds available in the CIP fund.
How much do we have in it?
Three, yes, yes. It's thirty-nine thousand, right? Probably. Yes, we have enough.
And what happened was, they repaired these doors once before, and they actually used body putty, and then they're missing. What happens is the water is under it, it starts falling, and it does start falling hard, it's like pincing. So then we got to take them off and rattle, try to get by, because we haven't had them in a while. So now we're, we got to get them, right, so all of them.
Consequences are severe. If you don't do it, they could shut the jail down, bottom line.
There's always something with those showers, too. I'll move it, you know, you don't have to come back and talk to me about it, I know of it.
If somebody's twenty-eight years old, who works, he's swinging for a while.
Okay, you got a motion?
I'll sign it.
Discussion?
And direct, take him out of the CIP fund?
Yes, on three sixty.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Discussion and action on the city, two-city franchise fee settlement claim forms. Who can speak to this? Anyone? As I understand it, there was a settlement for overcharging of utility rates.
Franchise fees.
And we, as a county, have an opportunity to file for some of the money that they're going to put out. Who should we have do this? County attorney? Human resources?
Well, I think the form should actually be signed by the board chairman, if it's the pleasure of the board to approve it.
I agree, except, somebody's got to track this down.
Yeah, I can work with you and fill it out.
Excellent.
I would move that we approve, approve the signing by the chair, chairman?
Second.
Discussion?
And the motion should include these forms and any additional ones that we might come in. There's, we've gotten several over the last couple of weeks, and-
Oh, really?
It's, I think, for various county buildings, and some of them are to building services, some are to the auditors, so we may have some more stragglers that are coming.
I would amend the motion to include these particular forms and any subsequent forms that shall be received by the county.
I would accept.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
So if there's other forms, do we know how much of a refund we're getting? This one is five thousand?
Total six million for the entire city. Maybe we can come up with a million.
It's based on per building, how much we actually charge, so right, I've counted over twelve thousand here, so it'll just depend on each building if it comes in.
Yeah, total is thirteen thousand twenty-eight dollars six cents, which will be in the general basic fund. And there may be additional.
Yeah.
Every residence also will get a refund too, so we could reduce our tax, tax asking by that amount.
Well, in reality, there was a change in state law that allowed the franchise fee to be increased in order to help pay for these settlements, so whatever we're getting refunded now, eventually will charge back.
Pay back out again, so we better not count on it for tax, to reduce taxes, okay?
Okay. In my efforts to get all this into the agenda, number sixteen is actually number twenty. So we will skip sixteen and get to twenty. In the meantime, Mark Nara.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a Woodbury County engineer. First item we have is a permit for Mid-American Energy for electrical service. This will be out, double check it again, on Hook Onus Avenue and three hundred thirty-fifth Street, so this is in the area that's down in the southeast portion of our county. They're moving a utility line from the east side of the road to the west side.
Need a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
And our second one is for a new natural gas pipeline, four-inch transitioning to a two-inch as it gets over to Barnett Avenue. This is along two hundred and sixtieth, through the Fort Neil interchange, recommend approval.
Move it.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Butler?
What I've been asked to do is kind of explain three different areas where we're involved with these budgets. What we're involved with, I'm going to talk a little bit about valuations, assess for taxable, I'm going to talk a little bit about our tax asking and tax rates, and then I got just one more piece I just gave you today. And this information is a lot more, what I'm going to talk about, I'm going to kind of summarize it, and what I'd like to do is go back to about the fourth page where you see a pie chart, fifth page, which is this piece here, and I'm going to talk about the valuations first. To kind of get an idea, I broke it down between the taxable valuations and the hundred percent valuations. It shows who pays the bulk of the rates, or who pays, who pays the bulk of the taxes. As you can see here, the residential property owners pay fifty-two point seven-two percent of our total taxes for Woodbury County. Now, this only affects Woodbury County, it will probably affect all entities because the breakdown here is the same for everybody. So when you look at it, our total assessed, our total tax value is three billion six hundred and thirty-nine million eight hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. Of that residential property consists of one billion seven hundred and eighty million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand some odd dollars, which is forty-eight point ninety-one percent. So every dollar is paid by taxpayer, forty-nine, forty-eight point ninety-one percent of that is covered by our residential people. Commercial's the next biggest one, it's twenty-three point eighty-one percent. You go to your ag lands, it's twelve point eighty-one percent. Then you got your gas, electric, nine point three, and et cetera down, as it gets smaller and smaller as we go down. But the bulk of the tax is paid are through residential, commercial, and then agricultural lands.
Danny, I'm sorry, do you see it shift from commercial to residential?
Yes.
And maybe I shouldn't ask that, but it really, it seems as though it's shifting.
And in the charts I've shown in the back here, you can see where ag land is picking up more because of tremendous increase, ag values have doubled from five years ago to now. Some of that's been taken care of with rollbacks, but not all of it, it's gone up so fast.
Oh, I see, you've got it here, okay.
So now we'll go back to the tax asking and tax rates. As you can see on the first page, what we have, what we have proposed, when we started budgeting, we did propose tax asking increase of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine oh eight, when we first started these budgets. What that means in relation to tax rates, the actual tax rate, if we adopt this today, which we aren't, because we have a lot of things to do yet, but if we adopted this today, our tax rate on the cities, residential owners and property owners within all the cities, would actually go down, down four point eight cents per thousand, in the rural area, go down twenty-two cents per thousand. And the reason the rural's bigger than the corporations is because we are freezing the tax asking out there, and we had a valuation increase of about ten percent, due to rollback to increased value of agricultural property, things like that. Now, and we got to remember, if we do freeze the tax asking, say we do freeze it, it puts us in a position that we are going to have a hard time balancing the budget, because there are no new money to cover new costs, wage increases, contractual increases, any type of inflation, we have no new money unless we generate new money. So that's a predicament we have when we do a tax freeze. I think on the second page, Sheriff, or third page, I go to if we left the tax rates the same. We had zero increase in our tax rates, but then we'd be able to generate a total of six hundred and thirty-five thousand new tax dollars. Now, I say we generate new tax dollars, that's a free in the tax rates, but it's also taking advantage of the increase in rollbacks, increase in new construction, increase in new remodeling, or rebuilding of any other businesses, new property valuations come on board. So there's a couple ways to look at this, you know, a lot of entities look at tax rates. We've kind of gone aggressive looking at tax askings somewhat, but then that creates a little bit of a problem there, because then I'm going to go to weekly updates, I'm going to give you weekly, on where we're at with the tax asking, as we do the cutting, or generate new revenues, or any other source of revenue. We'll come back each week with the tax asking, how it's affecting us, and also how we're coming out on our shortfalls on revenues to expenditures. Right now, on our revenues to expenditures, our real problem person, or fund is the general basic fund. We are capped, we can't generate any new revenue other than the two hundred and three thousand we have to buy log, because you're going to be at three fifty to go to the general supplemental fund. So we can generate two hundred and three thousand, that's already taken into consideration. All the revenues that we know about right now, without any additional revenues or additional funds coming in- All the revenues that we know about right now, without any additional revenues or additional funds coming in, we are short nine hundred and nineteen thousand, which is a lot less than a lot of years, we're still short. And we've done a couple cuts, so we're actually at nine hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. On metal health, we're actually have more revenue coming in than we have budgeted, seventy-four thousand. In our general supplemental, we're balanced out. In our debt service, we're balanced out, and rural basic, we're balanced out. Now, when I say we're balanced out, is take leaving the taxes early on, most of funds, without any increases. Because you go to the first page here, you'll see general basic, we started a two hundred and three thousand dollar increase. There's really nothing we can do about that because we have to levy the three fifty. You get the general supplemental with a lot of things that we don't have in this year, like Toledo not being there, that saved us money there. We have an actual tax reduction of one hundred and ninety thousand, two seventy-one. In county service, we have an increase of three hundred and nine thousand, three ninety-two because we use cash reserves, try burning down some of our reserves. There were, so we didn't have to pay it all over the region. They allowed us to do it this current year. So we don't have that ability as of yet, but we're going to have to increase the taxes to make up for that. Anytime you use reserves, there's always a slight penalty coming down the road where if you don't have them next year, you're going to have a tax increase or have to cut, it's finding revenues.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So, just so we're explaining this to the general, Joe on the street, okay? So you have your assessed valuation, and you're saying that we have a slightly decreased tax rate, and yet we still are asking, our tax asking is roughly two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, increased in comparison to last year.
Yes.
And the reason for that is because we have new growth, new valuation.
Right.
And so that's where, I, I just want to make sure, you know, because there's a lot of numbers, a lot of things out there, to make sure that people understand the reason that we can actually be, the county could be asking more in taxes is because even though our tax rate has gone down a little bit, that's not accounting for new growth. So really, if, if we're making a commitment, or I'll just speak for myself, it could be to keep a zero tax asking because it's not just the rate that we're looking at as far as being, you know, fiscally prudent and good stewards, correct?
Correct. For the zero tax asking, you'll actually reduce the tax rate because we have about a hundred million more worth of valuation that we aren't using, but we're using it to reduce the tax rate. Now, we're tied into tax increase automatically because of our three fifty cap. Or we're caught, and then the metal health, because, or county service and metal health, because we can have reserves that we use this year that we haven't used next year, for next year's asking.
I just wanted to clarify that because that's the thing, you know, you hear a lot from people, so say, well, yeah, you kept the tax rate the same, but my valuation went up.
Right.
Or you're not taking into account new growth. So really, with some level of transparency, it's not only the tax rate, but also the effects, effect of tax asking. Are you holding the line on that or decreasing it? And I get the challenges with salaries and other, other expenses, but I just wanted to-
Yeah, but tax askings have a direct impact on tax rates. If we have the tax rate the same, everybody's tax is going up a little bit because of the rollback changes.
Right.
But with the tax asking we're freezes, then we aren't asking for the new money that we could ask for.
Correct.
We won't capitalize on or be able to capture any new growth?
No. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't keep us from doing following fiscal years. We can make it up then, but then you're going to have a tax increase. You know, the following years, because the growth will still be there, and every year it grows a little bit more. And if we don't use the growth, it just keeps building up for down the road. We could have, if we really ran a real problems, we'd have a advantage to use that additional growth that's accumulated over, uh, one or two fiscal years. But the bottom line is, the tax rates, if they stay the same, they'll pay more taxes. If you keep the tax asking at frozen or lower level, it'll reduce our taxes. There's a lot of ingredients to this.
Well, that's where I think of, you know, basketball, you have assists and, you know, personal files and technical files, all these different statistics. But to me, the running score, you're the scorekeeper in my mind, is are we at zero for a tax asking, which in turn reduces the rate, and now county residents are paying either the same or less-
Correct.
-in taxes.
And, you know, I keep a running poll each week, give the board and the public an attitude where we're at with tax asking and our shortfall. At the end of all of our hearings, when we get ready to go to publish, I'm going to have a bunch of charts showing where we're at with everything. I'll show what a house today is, what a house tomorrow is with the different rollbacks and what their tax is. We do that out of air comparison, see how are we affecting residential, commercial, agricultural, in the rural hamlet cities? And then they'll know probably two weeks ahead of time. So they either pack it, or they like what we're doing.
Thank you for all your work on this.
No problem.
Questions, comments? Okay, moving on to number nineteen. I'm waiting on equipment. So I haven't really done anything with the time, but how about we set a date that we change the time? You want to go two weeks? Hopefully the equipment will be here by then, and we can move down and change the time at the same time. That work?
So you're proposing, Mr. Chair, the same starting time, but you're just saying the implementation date would be-
February tenth.
I would move this forward then.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. All right. February tenth, we'll change the time. Let's hope we have equipment by then. All right, item number twenty, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, a follow-up to a discussion two weeks ago at a meeting in which the building services department, under the direction of the building superintendent, shall be the representative to the board in all negotiations, contracts, specifications, and designs. This is for the physical buildings, not in the, the county engineers world, as it clarified. And so the policy is written here, and I would simply move that this policy be adopted.
Second.
Discussion?
This is a good idea in my mind, especially because of any warranties that the building superintendent should be aware of or communicate so that if people other than building services were to make changes, they would not inadvertently void a warranty or something like that. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Is there, do you have a specific document that you might vote as a policy?
I'll take the recommendation of Spur as where that might be most appropriate. I delineated that human resources could put it under job descriptions with the building superintendent, if such a document, if it does exist, to insert that sort of policy language. Is that something?
I'm sorry.
As far as, sorry, I caught you off guard there. As far as clear delineation of job duties and performances that could be put under the building superintendent's job duties, that this will be one that he will interface with any outside contractors, vendors.
We can, we can add that to his job description, which you know he should have all-
Is there going to be a policy decreed for this, a document that lays this policy out?
I think we need to add policy to a procedure manual, and I think there'd also be to, to make everybody else aware, all the other employees aware.
So are you, are you asking for the exact policy language that would be inserted into that?
Yes, I think this, this motion is tasking the human resources director.
So I have the, the policy language which was, which was put in the agenda, so it would be the adoption, maybe I need to amend the motion. The motion to say that the human resources director would put into the delineation of job performances and duties under the building superintendent, the following policy language as contained in the agenda, is that?
But there needs to be a policy, specifically, a policy that the human resources puts in.
We can bring back the I R C if you'd like for, for next week.
I move the table.
Job, sure. And you can, at this point, the action would be is to adopt this policy and task the human resources to come back with that specific policy.
Adopt the policy for next week.
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
In the policy, the reference to this certificate of substantial completion, what is meant by that?
To sign off on that work has been completed to the satisfaction of any contractual obligation that was, that was incurred so that it's not a, a department head or someone else who is saying that work has not been completed to the satisfaction, unless that's been trained upon by the building superintendent's personnel.
And I know that within the architectural world, the certificate of substantial completion is kind of a term of art. And we'll see that when we have a big project, usually that comes before the board for approval. And I think that that's, ultimately, it would be the board that would need to approve the certificate of substantial completion in the contract documents. So just to avoid confusion, I wonder if rather than using that language that's kind of a term of art, if we could, for the purpose of our policy, have written confirmation from the building superintendent that these things have been met. And then the policy would be that the, the board would have to have that from the superintendent before the board went ahead and approved the certificate of substantial completion.
So essentially, the building superintendent shall submit to the board for approval?
Well, basically, yeah, a written, a written confirmation that, that the board, that the building superintendent feels that this policy has been complied with. And then the board would have that as background of support for their discussion of whether to comply with this certificate of completion because-
And the architect's recommendation.
The architect also is intimately involved with that and the walkthrough and all those sorts of things. There's a lot of different parts of the certificate of substantial completion, but this confirmation from the building superintendent would be part of that process.
So are we at the point where maybe?
Okay, you move the table.
Until we get the proper language back.
I'll, I'll second that in working with, uh-
Ed, Joshua, okay. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. All right. Twenty-one, employee recognition.
It's another one for you, Mr. Gillon, as far as of employee recognition in terms of longevity, excellent customer service, and just touch base with you, I have a February third.
We do have, we do present certificates based on longevity and the health benefits of this one. I mean, certainly agree. If you'd like, if you see the samples, please apologize.
Wow.
I was wondering if you also speak during the ISAC conference, would you have attended? You heard a little bit of secret shopping in terms of your past life and other employment. Could you speak just briefly about any plans in order to increase customer service and?
We do want to roll out some different pieces to different, to various departments. So some training that we've, that we've signed up for, some models that we have for customer service. We can help people with some extra training. One of the things that we thought we'd implement as we went through the spring and summer would be to add the secret shoppers. It's a tool that restaurants and a variety of other service organizations use. Hotels and motels use it, certain Marriott stands for using it. They, what happens is you send people in who would be normal customers. It's just that they've essentially got a checklist of things that they're looking for, as well as their own personal comments, and then they provide that to, over feedback to us so that we can get a firsthand taste of what the service really wants like. So it's an excellent learning opportunity. The one thing I guess I try to emphasize with these things is it, it's not a catch, that's not what it's intended to. If we find an area that there needs to be improvement, then use, utilize the supervisors that we have, not many board supervisors, but the department supervisors, and provide some coaching and counseling and some ways to improve that service. So we can do the best that we can and provide the customer the kind of atmosphere that they're really looking for. Our customers, the taxpayers, we want to provide the taxpayer with the appropriate atmosphere and make sure that people are productive as well.
You'd have to have some cooperation and discussion with all the elected officials since, yeah. Because many of the customer service falls within-
Absolutely.
-their domain, not necessarily ours.
That's, that's true. We've got, as an example, of our motor vehicles there in my place, for you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're good to go? All right, number twenty-two.
Before we get on to that, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering on the resolution format certificate by which we can honor those in the community who have demonstrated excellent customer service, is that something that we are hoping to implement during this next week? Or to have, I know we have a fairly busy budget schedule.
I'd give it a couple, three weeks. You've got to notify the person and set it up.
So for this next meeting, I'd like to see if we could have some sort of resolution format to be put on the agenda so that we could see, similar to what Ed presented, that he might give for longevity. So if that could be added to the agenda just to, to show what it would look like in terms of a resolution or format.
And you and Ed are going to work that up?
We will.
All right.
We will.
Okay, twenty-two, claims processing, approval, mileage, meals, Jeremy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to follow up on a concern from, from last week's meeting. I was not able to attend due to a mandatory work conference, but wanted to, to ask as far as the, the meal policy and if there's any sort of limitations on meals that are in support of county business, whether it's at a conference or otherwise. If I can ask our, our auditor if there's any sort of cap or limit, or limitation on those who are at a conference as far as meals that you know of? Or is it just all within that reasonable limit policy? I know you provided us with some information generally speaking.
As far as just when you're county business and you're traveling, there is no way to let you submit this ultimately reasonable practice. And that still falls down to is that every claim comes to the board with the ability to internalize reasonable. As far as some of the conversation you're talking about, there is also, is, I think you're talking about registration fees when they include meals and that sort of thing around the general. It gets into a lot, into the weeds here for a lot of things because you're talking about, you have different policies that deal with, if it isn't an overnight stay, we don't, you can't submit it immediately. Is that, that's what the policy is currently.
How about alcohol?
It is not contained in that, that was inadvertently backed up when they changed the policy about that because it was there previously.
I will seek for, and I'll, I'll move this to be put on the next week's agenda item to, to include a no alcohol policy. I think it's reasonable that, that alcohol shouldn't be purchased if an elected official or deputy or someone else is submitting such a receipt. Also a limitation as far as meals per day. I think that is a fifty-dollar meal limitation maximum, certainly not a minimum, would be, would be good. And then I, I want to discuss, I'm, I'm confused based upon the last meeting. Obviously, two supervisors submitted registration fees, and I'm confused why they didn't fit the county travel and expense policy. It says, and I'll read this, that it's a policy of Woodbury County to authorize approved travel for employees and elected officials, deputies to attend meetings, conferences, seminars, or other events related to their positions. So just curious as to how the attendance of two supervisors at the chief executive of our state did not follow those policies.
There was no travel involved.
Correct.
And a lot of it is based on travel. Everything else comes back to this board for approval. And last week, we were not here. It was voted four to oh not to approve that. So it does come back now.
So registration fees are not, ISAC conferences, those- So, registration fees are not, ISAC conferences, those would not be covered, is that correct?
Those would be covered.
Why?
Because it's out of city travel.
So if there's an ISAC conference in Sioux City and they charge a hundred and fifty-nine dollars for that conference, those would not be eligible, is that correct?
You've got to give me a better example than that.
If there is a chamber dinner and certain individuals from this board want to attend or the economic development director, would that be covered?
My opinion, no.
It's been-
Eighty-five dollars was approved during the chamber dinner by your economic development director to be a tier-three sponsor. Nothing was brought up. Two thousand and three, Governor Bill Sac attended, three people from this board received registrations for that, nothing was brought up. And I guess my-
It could be thanks to Mr. Brown that it's delineated now. You can see what it's for on the, where you could not before, but there was not an explanation.
That's not the same issue, though. The auditor last week basically said those claims were in compliance and in accordance with past practice. I essentially volunteered to suspend county policy for myself.
And I'm just wondering, I just want to be consistent, fair, and have policy follow policy, because I just want to make sure that our economic development director, and I hate to drag you into this, but he will not have meals reimbursed or registration fees, chamber dinners, anything like that, which has been past practice over the last several decades. And if that's the case, I just want to see that revision of policy, because I think we just ought to follow it. These are policies, this was signed six twelve of two thousand and twelve by Supervisor Smith.
Is that the economic development?
This is the travel and expense policy. The economic development policy was approved by you all in July of two thousand and fourteen. And again, I have no qualms if we're going to say that there's no registration fees, no ISAC fees, no chamber dinners, no Washington DC trip. And I will use as an example, Mr. Clausen, you've had hundreds of dollars in mileage taken when you go to Merg meetings, when you go to the county courthouse. I will approve that. The reason that I will approve that is because it's part of the policy. It would not be fair for me to say, well, I don't take mileage, so then I don't think you should. The fact that I don't take mileage is irrelevant, the fact is it's in your policy. And that's what I just want to make sure that we're holding to the fidelity of. And if that's the case, I would simply move that the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors follows their own policies.
We did last week.
Did not.
No.
It's very clear that you did not. There's no way that you-
The only thing, I don't mean to interrupt you, it is on a case-by-case, and it does make it difficult to be consistent. For instance, I'm going to go to the N double ACP banquet in February. You know, I wouldn't think to put that in, but maybe it should go in if we're going, you know, or the Labor Hall of Fame dinner, or the, I mean, it's just where do you start and stop with this? Because you can make a case that it all has to do with economic development, so I'm not opposed or favored, but they're-
But you can see how two thousand and three, three individuals are granted to go to the governor's, and then now, two individuals aren't.
Well, they withdrew it, that's why I voted for it. They withdrew it before we ever went to town.
Well, it's very difficult to argue on behalf of oneself, and I commend both of these supervisors for saying, I'll just withdraw it, because you don't want to advocate. I'm glad that I'm not going, so that I can advocate on behalf. And if you were to go and represent this board, I would say it is absolutely right of me to approve it, and it would be wrong of me to disapprove it based on either personal preference, the fact that I'm not going, or based on the fact that I don't like it. Because the fact is it would follow policy, and that's all I'm asking, is that we follow the very policies they were around when we came to the board. And so that's all I'm asking for, is that regardless of personal preference, regardless of who the person is that's submitting the claim, that the board simply follow its policies. I just think that's good for the-
Then we should look at all the policies, because there's pick and choose on many of them. This is one of them, but, and, you know, there's not consistent following of policies amongst elected officials, evidently amongst us, so you want to go down this road, there's going to be a lot of picking and choosing depending, and we cannot really enforce, we can do it maybe for us. But what I've learned is we can't really enforce a lot of policies for other county officials. They can either do it or not do it, follow it or not follow it.
Right, I'm just asking that we follow it for ourselves. We've been on three or four weeks, we don't have all the history. But what I'm saying is, it's very clear what the policies are. If we're not going to follow them, then we shouldn't have them. Or, I would ask that you come back and say, here's the revision of the policy that we will have.
Well, I mentioned it to you before the meeting, if we had backup on this, we would have the same paperwork you have there, which we did not.
Mr. Gill submitted this to all of us, this travel and expense policy.
But that's not what was written on here, to my knowledge. Approval mileage and meals, adding to the policy Woodbury County claims procedure. It just depends on how you interpret, I don't have a copy, so, the way that is written and what you're approving. Do I think the taxpayers should be picking up the bill for any of us going to lunches? No.
And I don't think the taxpayers should be picking up travel to, from home to the county courthouse, but that's irrelevant, because I would vote for it if it follows this policy. It does, and so I would submit that, yes, we should pay for mileage, even though I don't take it, because it follows this policy and it says mileage in support of county business.
Pass.
I just want to weigh in, because this kind of goes back to what we were discussing previously with the approval of the claims procedure and the way the auditor's office looks at these documents. And that's what I said when you requested that information for the policy, economic development policy and the travel policy. And so I submitted to you what, how the auditor's office looks at claims when they come through, and what we look at is first to see if there's documentation that submits that meets the policies that the board adds, if there's documentation to support a claim. We look at past practice, which is very important, because that's what we have to deal with when we're having this very discussion about whether or not a claim meets that policy. We base it on past practice. And Jean has a question about a claim, whether it should be forwarded or we should flag it. She brings it to my attention, and also, and the third thing we look for is their compliance with the state, federal law, and the policy. But we're looking for documentation, we're looking for past practice, and whether it's lawful or public purpose is what it boils down to. And I provided you with an attorney general's opinion on public purpose. I really kind of went back to that issue we talked about with the pop cans, or the pop that's purchased for retirement dinners, it's basically the same thing, and what that attorney general's opinion said is that it is, case by case. What it boils down to is whether it serves a public purpose. And so that's what you folks are relying on us to do when we talked about that claims procedure this morning. And the question came up after that claim last week. Supervisor Smith asked me after the meeting why it wasn't a flag, and I said, because we looked at it to determine, mostly, it was past practice, because there are a lot of the same events historically, year after year, that you've approved and never been brought forward and never voted against. That's why we brought that forward. But by same token, as I've told Mr. Clausen year after year, is they can do anything they want, and he has. And you can question that. But the reason that that claim was not flagged, because we felt that it fell into policy, past practice was there, and we believed it served a public purpose.
And I think that's fine, but that, you know, a supervisor can also pull a claim, and, you know, if we want to flag it ourselves, we can, which, that's the beauty of the system. We do rely on your office, because that's a lot of work to go through, all of that. And, but then we also have responsibility to pull them if we want to look at them as well, as we go through the AP edits, and so, you know, it wasn't wrong that it wasn't flagged, and it wasn't wrong that Supervisor Claus wanted it pulled.
The point that Supervisor Taylor is making is that when you call, I mean, when you choose to override that policy, you do have a chilling effect on folks doing their job here, is because that very afternoon, the economic development director said, well, I was going to go to that, should I go to it or not? Because, you know, it was voted against. And that's what boils down to, is that when I look at things as far as public purposes, if I'm going to attend an event and then I want the county to pay for it, I look at is, is this something I would do if I wasn't a public official? If I wasn't an elected official, would I be attending this event? That's what it boils down to.
Well, I appreciate it very much. I'm going to make a motion of one line addition. And this is that the board of supervisors shall approve claims that are within its policy and not disapprove of claims based on personal preference or the particular individual submitting a claim.
I would, if you've got a problem with this, I would much prefer we go over all the policies. And why just add a sentence or, to muddy the waters even more?
That makes it very clear. The motion is on the table, Mr. Chair.
Second.
That'd be great.
Second.
Can you read that one more time?
Sure. I move that the board of supervisors shall approve claims that are within its policy and not disapprove of claims based on personal preference or the particular individual submitting a claim.
I would like just one clarification. So, any claim from any elected official, even though it's not following our policy, is that, I mean, what-
You're saying the opposite of what you just-
Shall approve claims that are within its policy.
Right, but we do approve claims that are in violation of our policy on a regular basis.
This is only shall language, that if it's following policy, I mean, clearly, having or not having a receipt would not be within the policy, so wouldn't it be incumbent upon you to-
That's an easy, right. I guess I'm thinking more of, like, daily meals, transport. I still believe our policy is no reimbursement for meals if you're traveling within a day and back, no overnight stay. The sheriff made a case, said, you know, I just think they, our guys and gals need to be paid lunches, and we're going to do it. No one really bought that, we just kind of said, okay, realizing that, you know, unless we want to get in another big bruhaha about it, that we would just go along with it. But the policy then is different for them, as opposed it is as it is for many other people in this county. I'm just saying, once you start reviewing these, you know, it's not, it's not that I'm granting him a favor because I like his transport, people better than I like somebody else, it's just, nothing is so black and white. I just think you're making it so black and white.
Not to get into the minutia, but that's not a, that's a false comparison, because meals within the sheriff's office does not compare to last week's claim. That was a registration cost. If someone does not want to eat a meal, if they're fasting, if they don't like the food, they still have to pay the registration cost, which falls under economic development activities policy.
But I am talking about the daily reimbursement policy, so it does, I'm talking about following policy and being consistent of following policy. We're not consistent. I would offer a friendly solution, I guess, to what I think might move us forward on this, is perhaps in economic development or for the greater purpose, we could look at sales tax dollars as opposed to local option sales tax, taking it out of that, maybe Dennis could set up a line item, and that would come out of non-tax dollars, that would be property tax dollars, or not property.
I think we're digging a hole here.
But if it's economic development, local option sales taxes to be used for economic development, it is possible that we could funnel those claims over to that fund, and then it takes Supervisor Clausen's concerns and many other citizens away, because we're not using, we're not taxing for it. So it may be a way to-
Local option sales tax is a tax, though.
It is, but we are going to collect it regardless, and it is to be designated for economic development. I'm just offering that as a possible out-of-the-box way to look at it.
I'm not sure that the board has the ability to create a policy that would require a vote in a certain manner on an issue. I think that each board member as an elected official has discretion to vote one way or the other anytime a claim is presented, so I don't think that the board could demand a vote one way or the other.
Which means it's case by case.
Well, ultimately, it's case by case, but I think that the elected official would have a constitutional right to vote however they're conscious demanded, or how they feel the constituents want them to vote in that particular matter.
Want to withdraw the motion?
So right now, the language, it's a policy of Woodbury County to authorize approved travel, does not do that? Because we're saying it's our policy to authorize it, that doesn't do the same effective thing?
The policy is, as a policy, it's there, but a board member could still, as we currently stand, could still vote to not follow the policy. But, in case I might come wrong, but as I understand, your amendment or your motion would be to require a supervisor to follow the policy as long as the policy is matched without exceptions.
And not disapprove it based on personal preference or the individual submitting a claim?
Right.
In other words, I don't, I don't say, I'm not, we're not going to follow the mileage policy because of Supervisor Clausen, or personal preference, I don't take mileage. When I drive from home to here, I don't calculate, well, what's that, I'm fifty-six cents mile? And, but it's still incumbent upon me to follow the policy.
Right.
And not do so based upon personal preference or the person submitting the claim.
Yeah. I understand the point that you're making, but I, what I'm saying is, I think that a board member has a right to vote however they want to on any issue, regardless of their reason for voting that way.
Well, then I will, based upon the fact that we can violate our own policies, which was on last week, and based upon not policy, but what I believe to be a gracious win of personal preference for the person submitting the claim, I will go.
You can leave whatever you want.
I'll make the public-
I have not changed the way I vote on anything unless I've got a good reason to, or unless I'm proven wrong. So don't sit there and tell me that I'm voting against Matthew Young, or Mark Monson, or Jeremy Taylor, because I don't care about that kind of crap. I never have.
Mr. Chairperson, the motion has been made and seconded and turned to table.
And they withdrew.
They withdrew. You have to ask, because once the motion has been made and seconded, it's possession of the assembly, and you have to ask if anybody objects to withdrawing.
Anybody object to withdrawing that motion?
Thank you.
There you go. All right, next item, secondary employment. Can we move this to next week?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I would ask for unanimous consent to do so.
All those in favor of moving this to next week?
Aye.
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 All right, next item up for bid, courthouse security proposal from the sheriff. Mr. Drew. This is a discussion item.
Mr. Chair, just, once again, I would ask that this be postponed until after we get the FER ruling, because we could be affecting that FER ruling. I don't know that we are, but we could be.
I don't think we will.
I'm not an attorney either, you know.
Ed?
You know, I, I think that as far as the FER ruling is concerned, from my, from my involvement and my understanding, there are things that we can do that won't really have an impact on, I think, all the briefs that were submitted and finalized as of December twenty-second. And so there, those briefs, ones here were submitted then, being reviewed. They have ninety days from the twenty-second of December to return that verdict. There are, of course, the two possibilities, that ASME has the appropriate, the appropriate union or that CWA is the appropriate union. And, sorry, you caught me off guard. I forgot who's standing. But anyway, they, they should have a ruling for us. And I'll, I'll leave this to today, because of the expert in the security that I would say that the only thing that I would, the only counterpoint I would add is that we may want to wait for exact final of supervisors who's in charge of it. May want to wait for the final layout of the plan until we do have a ruling back for, for the folks approved. That was a tick. Don't leave.
No, you're, you're... Mark had asked me to look into the courthouse security proposal. And basically, if we remember way back, this thing was well-vetted for quite a while. And the original proposal, and Larry was there at the meetings that we had in the courtrooms with the committee. And original proposal was to have deputies, and we realized that was way out of the question. It was going to be way too much money. So then we pared that down to having a sergeant overseeing the courthouse security with basically reserves or similar to what you have now. That was how we envisioned it. And we had discussed with the CWA to make sure that they were good with things. And we had come up with, in order to properly do this, we felt that a sergeant should oversee it because in our contract, contract language is clear that if a deputy is there, you'll be paid a sergeant wage if he is overseeing a group of people. We have that on our patrol division now or in our jail. If that sergeant's not working, then the other person becomes an acting sergeant. So we, we have to pay that contractually. And that's how the number that we came up with wages and benefits for a sworn deputy sergeant. And that required us to backfill, obviously, you know, you're going to have the deputy. But that's, that's all in those figures. Originally, we were budgeted, what they figured was $250,000. And so our total with civilian security officers, similar to what you have out there now, minus the training and some other issues, that benefit is $86,040, which totaled $183.78. So, and then we, I met with the CWA and asked if they, I asked the president if they would have any problems if we looked at another proposal that if we were stretching ourselves a little more by adding more responsibility and going with the civilian side. Sergeant Finler is a civilian and her back wages for a new correctional officer to take her place. And those are the numbers in proposal two of 136, 228, 58. So that would require that what our sergeant right now on the civilian side of our transportation and court security, which is one person that's, that was designed before this thing ever evolved and transportation, she oversees those. So she would have an added responsibility, but basically, Major Wick, Major Stallman and myself, probably those two mainly, would be kind of overseeing the courthouse security. So we would fall in compliance with what the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy requires for reserves. Ideally, what we would like to see, and what we always wanted to see, was that the people that are in this position would be, fall under reserve status. Because if you have law enforcement academy graduation and you've been out of the job, I know a couple of those people, one of them in particular has been out over twenty-five years, twenty-seven now. And just to say, he graduated from the academy, twenty-seven years with no continuing ed causes a lot of heartburn for any sheriff. And so what we would do is put them under the reserves and they have eighteen months to catch up, to do their modules and things such as that. And so then they would be protected under the umbrella. And I, you know, I really don't need to get into particulars of how we would appear, but obviously we feel a strong sense that uniform presence is a, is a better, better look in just some other issues that we see. But I know for you folks, it is about numbers and dollars. And Ed, I, I always tell Ed, I could be a human resources director. I think he agrees it's going to be the sheriff.
I certainly don't want to be the sheriff. I would very likely be a serious sheriff.
Well, you do all right. But anyway, when he prepared the legend for that area, you know, there was some lack of training. We have to shoot quarterly. We have to qualify quarterly in a position that there, and I would want to make sure of that. Some of them might have disqualified the first time in a number of years, but proficiency is important. There's just a number of things that I would like to see them brought up. We can do that under our training already. So we meet as sheriff's office, we have incorporated quarterly training. So we would include them into that training area also. And that would be in compliance with what the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy would expect under the reserve deputies. So that is that. You guys, the board set the, the amount of money that you were paying those people. I will just say this, I mean, that's, that's the number that we would obviously stick with. It was more than I was going to pay, so I don't want you to know that. But we had come up with a number, but you had also come up with a number that was, that you were comfortable with. So we have figured that. And what we figured is, the winning deal, I think, I strongly feel is that the presence of the sheriff's office, the ability that we have now going to go up to trust fully with another building secure, the radio communication, the training, the alarm system. There's been several alarms here that we've come over to and unfortunately, and nothing against them, but there was no, they didn't, they didn't know there was an alarm. And that, that just happened recently. It doesn't happen all that often. But to be honest with you, if this system that you have, I, it's not all that good to tell someone to take the phone off the hook and push a button and hold it. And that, that's just not how, that's not today's technology. So our presence of roving in the building, moving back and forth, have one choke point is what we would call access area, where you would have maybe two there at a time, but quite often just one. Two others roving and getting to know the people in the buildings. And I think that's just a, a better way to do it. That's what we, we discussed months ago. And I, you know, I really don't want to beat that horse again, but that's, these are the numbers we're at. And we feel that this is the most effective way to do it. And so I, I just did what I was supposed to do. We've, we've discussed this for, for a long time.
In a full disclosure of the costs, Ed, the decision of the previous board to hire private security did incur legal costs. Do you have an estimate on what that has caused accounting?
That's a hard one to estimate because there was, there was a conflict between CWA and ASME. Woodbury County joined ASME when they went to FER. It's kind of a usual situation. Typically you have the union, but you don't have two unions, but you typically have a union against many. In this case, you had both of those. The approximate cost for that would be about $7,000. I think that would probably include everything. Ed, but that, I would say that would be a lot of stuff, I do.
But it may have, we may have incurred it anyway, since it's the two unions. Even had it gone the other way, there may have been agreements filed by ASME, so...
It could very well have.
You know, it may have just happened.
Then it can, then it can, then it can.
To clarify one thing here, because it's been said a number of times. These are not private contractors, these are Woodbury County employees.
And they're covered by the ASME bargaining unit at this point, as the way they were set up. So, and they are Woodbury County employees.
But as sheriff, would you say the training that you could provide along with full arrest hours would warrant a change to your office?
Well, it would be, these, these people only have the right to be detained and hold till, till we arrive. And that's always been, they don't have the same arrest powers because that, you know...
They, as I said, they have the power of retaining, they have the power of arrest. There's, I, I think it's, it would be clearer and more cohesive.
So you're saying the same arrest powers that I have is what...
Yeah, correct.
These folks would also have to repeat an incident to a deputy arriving on the scene, so that would create another layer of...
See, it is an added layer of bureaucracy, and I said that months ago. Basically, the simple, simplest way to do it is to have the sheriff do it because he has the personnel. And that there's times that, you know, if there are three or four, we maybe rely on some others. Court security is running quite a bit in transport, but there may be times that, you know, we can add people that are also from our staff. Those are some of the added additions that we have the ability to do.
Does it make a difference how the FER issue comes down to you?
No, that doesn't matter. That's a, that's a union issue.
So either way, you're okay with it?
Right, right. What, what, what union they belong to is merely up to those people as far as I'm aware. I would say I'm getting involved in that.
And I, I think it could be structured from, from, I had looked at it, tried to sit back and look at it, try to figure out if it goes this way or it goes this way. Clearly, if CWA comes back and FER decides that they're, that they have this in hand, that's really easy. If they come back and they say, ASME is the, or is the, is the union that should be handling this, I think there's no reason why the sheriff couldn't be in charge and couldn't, we just have to structure it and decide it for the Republicans.
Right, because I have employees at the sheriff's office that are asking for this as well as CWA, so that's, it's not any issues.
But that could change the whole set of facts that were once before the FER board's ruling because now you have potentially sworn law enforcement who has not typically been represented by ASME, has been represented by CWA. And that's a completely new set of facts that would not have been before the FER board's ruling, correct?
You know, I think you're, you're right. I'm sorry, I'm...
No, no, but I just don't think as reserve deputy you can belong to, to any, you're, you're a reserve, you don't... Reserve deputies aren't allowed to belong to bargaining units.
Diane? Diane McTeer?
ASME Local 3462 President. I guess I have a problem right now that this is before the board for any discussion or decision. We got to wait till FER comes through. I don't think you can make a decision on it. Right now, there are members, they're covered by ASME, they're under my contract. And that's the way it is until the FER board decides differently. I've no, I notified Council 61 and Danny Holman and made them aware of what's going on. And we will take whatever action is necessary if a decision should be made.
This is why I think it really is in the board's best interest, everyone's best interest here. Woodbury County to wait until we do get the FER ruling. I, again, the sheriff does have ASME employees under him currently. I, I don't know why we can't, I, this all can't work, whichever way the, whichever way the FER board decides. I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I agree. Like I said, just for a little clarification, I understand your position, but there is no, I don't believe anyone to state that reserve deputies belong to a, a union or association.
And that, as far as I know, is correct, too. And one thing I would add is that because they are covered, all of these people are covered under the ASME contract. However, none of them belong to the union because they're part-time at this point and therefore not eligible. So, and while the union is, is, there, there's certain reasons why this should, was, was argued the way it is. I'm not sure it serves our best interest to go back to FER and re-argue the case. I, I think we can work with it whichever way it comes down and get the results that you folks are hoping for.
I need any correction there, Ed? Part, part-timers are eligible to join.
Oh, you are eligible, yeah?
Yes, you are. Some locals, they have appropriated for part-timers versus full-timer fees. We don't have that in our local. That would have to amend the contract.
Okay, so they can be members of the...
They, they would pay, they could reduce paying members, but they pay the full rate, not something based on their out...